Good evening everyone, and welcome to the April 22nd meeting of zoning board of adjustment. My name is Jaylen Carr, I'm ZBA Chair. To my left Josh Neely who's Vice Chair, JP Boucher who is a member, Robert Shaw, member, Steve Lionel, also zoning board member, and Joseph Potry who is an alternate. So we do have a full board with us, all five members. So all five members will be voting on all cases unless any member needs to recuse himself, in which case Mr. Potry will vote. But alternates do participate in all deliberations of the board. So this evening we have seven cases, it's a long agenda. We have both applications for variances and special exceptions. So just in terms of kind of what all that means, so a variance is a request to deviate from the terms of the ordinance. And in order for the zoning board to grant a variance, we have to find that five criteria are met. We have to find that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, that it would be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, that granting the variance would do substantial justice, that there be no diminution of surrounding property values, and owing to special conditions of the property, denying the variance would result in an unnecessary hardship. Obviously it's more detailed than that, but I think most of you here are applicants this evening, and you hopefully have had a chance to go through all the criteria. We also have a request for special exception. A special exception is a use that is allowed under the zoning ordinance when certain conditions are met. So just in terms of the order of business, I'll call each case to order, I'll read the case into the record, and then the applicants will have the opportunity to come up to the mic, state your names and address, and then you have up to 15 minutes to explain your application to the board, make any comments that you wish. After that, of course the board at that point can also ask questions if they wish. After the applicants completed your presentation, then anybody wishing to speak in favor of the application can come up to the mic. Also, you state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to make any comments that you wish to the board. Following that, anybody who has any questions, concerns, or opposition can also come up to the mic, same process, state your name and address for the record, and any comments that you wish to make. Following that, the applicant has the opportunity to come back up to the mic, and has up to five minutes for any rebuttal. Again, that's optional, you don't have to take advantage of that if you don't wish to. And then, anybody from the questions, concerns, or opposition camp, just one person, has the opportunity to come back and have a last word. And again, that's if you wish, it's optional. Once all testimony has been completed, then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back up to the board for deliberation. The board will deliberate and then can make a decision this evening, or if the board feels that additional information is perhaps needed, if the application could be continued to another meeting, typically the next available agenda. So that's kind of the process for the board overall. So now I'm going to call the roll. And Mr. Neely.
Present.
Mr. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Present.
Mr. Lionel.
Present.
Mr. Potry.
Present.
And I'm Jaylen Carr, I'm also present. And also to my left is Carter Fock, Deputy Planning Manager, who staffs the zoning board, and who is here to guide us and keep us honest, and hopefully answer any questions that we may have. Mr. Fock, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No, there are none.
If not, then I'm going to go ahead and read the first case into the record unless any board member has any questions. So the first case is Stephen and Kristen Theodore of 1120 West Hollis Street requesting variance from land use code section 190 to 64 to exceed the maximum accessory use area, 40 percent permitted, 71 percent proposed, to erect a 36 by 40-foot detached three-car garage. It's in the R30 zone in Ward 5. Are the applicants present? Feel free to come up to the mic. And as noted, state your name and your address for the record.
Stephen Theodore, 1120 West Hollis Street, Nashville.
Kristen Theodore, 1120 West Hollis Street, Nashville.
Thank you. You can go ahead and just explain to the board what it is you're looking to do.
I'll let her start.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak. So, we are looking to add a three-car garage. We have a couple of sports cars that my husband and son work on, and we would like to have some additional space to store those cars. In addition, we do have an attached two-car garage to the house, which I used to be able to park in, so it would actually give me that space back. We are also looking for, like I said, some workspace for them to do some work on the car, some workshop space, as well as I do a Christmas light show each year. It's one of the animated ones where you can pull up out front, kind of tuned to a radio station. So I have a lot of props that I need to store. So we're looking for some ground level storage, as well as getting up in the attic, and the other two-car garage is getting a little difficult.
Anything you'd like to add?
I think she summed it up. The, it seems like it's a big area, you know, on paper, but for us it doesn't seem like it's that big in the yard. It's definitely set back from the road over 100 feet. And we've, you know, kind of got our eyes across our teeth with that, all the things that we need to do. I think, at this early stage, just kind of process, and, you know, packing the air.
Does anybody in the board have any questions? Anything else you would like to add?
I did speak to each of our neighbors that were home. We did have some signed forms that we submitted with the application, just to show that they're in favor. The one to our left was not home, so we were not able to get his, but I don't see him here tonight either, so I don't think we have any issues or concerns from him.
So I do just have one question. Did you consider at all an alternative of attaching the garage to the house?
We have thought about that, and it's not out of the question. From our fence layout and with the way we typically access our backyard, that's kind of been the routine since 2007, we booked in. So I feel like it would, it would change up the structure of our routine getting into the backyard, we could have moved that type of case style to the other side of the property. But that's definitely something we have considered.
And we'd also have to move our propane tank. So that's also in the, in the path.
Understood. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the application? If not, I'm going to just note that we do, as you noted, we do have three letters addressed to the board. I'll read the first one. To whom it may concern, "I've been informed by my neighbors, Stephen and Kristen Theodore, that their intent to build a detached 36-by-40 three-car garage at 1120 West Hollis Street. The purpose of the garage is to store sports cars and have a personal workshop." And they indicated, "I do not have any objections to this addition." All three letters that we have are the same. So the first one is from Jonathan Malloy at 1099 West Hollis Street. The second one is from, it looks like Joe Carabaccio Cavallo. A little, little hard to read that one. Nine Tammy Circle. And then, this looks like Zachary Wagner from 1128 West Hollis Street. So hopefully I got those.
Yep.
Very good. And unless you have anything else to add, you can take a seat. Is there anybody in the audience with any questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and open up the deliberations of the board. Thoughts? Mr. Lionel.
This is a large lot, and it's in a pretty rural section of the city. Given that the, we have letters from the butters that saying that they're, don't have any objections to it, I think it's a reasonable thing to permit.
Anyone else? Thoughts?
I'm in favor of the application. Again, as stated, the lot is large. The other, the other accessory, the other, the other...
Speak up. They can't hear you.
Sorry. The other structures on the property is the pool and the shed, and, you know, of course, I think that's something that's usual for a home. If those pool and shed were not there, you know, maybe, maybe they would be within the, the open spaces, so. But again, I think what's the main, the main thing is that the lot is, is large. The garage is set back, doesn't encroach on any setbacks, so I'm going to support the application.
Mr. Shaw.
I know this somewhat maybe gets to aesthetics, but then, you know, you did ask about the idea of maybe pursuing the, you know, attaching of this structure, and while that would prevent the need for the variance, it also might end up creating a home with this, you know, probably massive-looking five-car garage that might be more imposing than having the set-off structure. So, I mean, at the same time, you know, obviously, from what I can tell, the applicant could have done that without coming here, so it's not to say that they, you know, there's anything preventing that from happening. But I think maybe from the aesthetics and just from everything else, I don't see that there's any kind of harm by doing this as a detached structure versus an attached structure.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Neely.
So, so I concur with the, the statements of the other board members. Two other points I wanted to make, we had a case about a year ago, maybe closer to two years ago, with somebody who proposed the same thing, also on West Hollis Street, up by the Charter School, closer to the, to the high school, and, and we did, we did approve it. And when you drive by today, I mean, it looks like part of the property, and I feel like this is, is really the same, same basic thing. In addition, it was interesting to see the neighbor from Nine Tammy also sign off in, in support. Took a ride back to Nine Tammy, and it appears to be like a, like a berm between the two properties, so, so, you know, the rear butter's not going to be affected by this either. So I'm, I'm in, in favor of this application.
I agree, I'm also in favor, and just to follow up on Mr. Shaw's point, also, attaching the garage would require moving a propane tank and changing the access, you know, into the property, which would be certainly a significant burden. And in addition to that, you just noted, more rural areas with larger lots, good-sized detached buildings, barns, et cetera, are not uncommon, so it wouldn't be out of the place.
Anybody wish to make a motion? Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Stephen and Kristen Theodore, owners of 1120 West Hollis Street, sheet D lot 614, requesting variance from land use code section 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use area, 40 percent permitted, 71 percent proposed, to erect a 36-foot by 40-foot detached three-car garage, R30 zone, Ward 5. The board believes that granting the variance would be, would not be contrary to the public interest, because it's a large lot with other ideas that we kicked around on the board, in terms of attaching the, the structure to the house would actually make things look worse. We have testimony from neighbors, all, the testimony we have is in favor of the application. We believe the spirit of the ordinance would be observed, because this is a reasonable use and does not impact the rest of the neighborhood. Granting the variance would do substantial justice, because it allows the owners to put their, their vehicles in covered spaces and have a workshop without having them park outside. And we have no evidence that the values of surrounding properties would be diminished. Granting, denying this application would cause unnecessary hardship to the applicant, because they would be forced to use a construction method, a scheme that would be detrimental to the looks of the, of the property. So for all of those reasons, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Shaw. All those who... Okay, thank you. There you go. The motion passes unanimously, so your variance is granted. Just be aware that there is a 30-day appeal period where somebody could file for a motion for reconsideration. It's probably unlikely, but, you know, you'd be proceeding at your own risk in that time. Thank you. And you're free to go if you wish. Or you can stay, and you can watch everyone else. Right, give me the next case into the record. Alexander Malivorn, owner, 72 to 74 Kinsley Street, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16E1 to exceed the maximum driveway width, 31 feet and 3 inches existing, with a 10-foot wide curb cut on Kinsley Street, and a 21-foot and 3-inch curb cut on Wilder Street, requesting an additional nine feet to an existing driveway on Wilder Street, for a total width of 43 feet 3 inches. It's in the RB zone in Ward 6. Is the applicant here this evening?
Yes. Good evening, I'm Alexander Malivorn, 72 to 8 Kinsley Street. Pretty simple, I'm just looking to expand the driveway by nine feet, so the tenants no longer have to attempt to drive over the curb or maneuver around each other's vehicles. The parking way is already there, it doesn't increase any of the amount of parking, it is literally just the curb amount. I do have the intent later to pave the driveway, but one, move the curb first. Other than that, I believe all the information's in the application that I'm sure you've already read, so.
Anything you'd like to add?
I don't know.
So is there any questions from the board?
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
How many units are in this, this building?
It's a four-unit.
Okay.
All of them are three bedrooms.
And, so, so you have a driveway, a usable driveway that backs into Kinsley, right?
Yeah, there's one driveway on the Kinsley side, and then there's one on the Wilder Street side. And then there's basically a long line for each unit, and one of those units kind of has to like drive around the other ones, or drive over the curb to get into their spot.
So, so the plan is to keep, to keep the driveway on Kinsley and just add into this other one, right? So there's no way for us, if you made a wider curb cut on, on Wilder, to get rid of that driveway on Kinsley, right?
No, that's the one I park in, I owner-occupied the building.
Okay. I was just asking for safety reasons. Anytime we can get cars onto the side roads instead of the, the main road, that's, that's always a big thing for me, so. So, so you said they're all, the four units, three, three bedrooms, so basically everybody probably has two vehicles, right?
At least.
At least, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Potry.
I assume the, the existing unpaved driveway, that's been, that's been the case for a while? Like probably...
Yes.
For as many years as you can think of, probably?
Yeah, it currently has crushed rock and stone dust that's been tamped down, but it's been there for close to a decade, so it's got some wheel ruts, and it gets muddy and filled with weeds.
Fair enough. Any other questions? So forgiven me if this was answered. How many total parking spaces do you have realistically?
So, because there are like long lines where people have to park like one in front of the other, it does kind of depend on like the size of the vehicles. Right now, for the one that I park in, it's about two cars, three if they're tiny, and then the other ones are similar. So the one that I'm trying to gain curb access for is about two vehicle lengths.
Any other questions from the board? Anything you'd like to add? Right, well you can have a seat. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Just if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record.
Gillian Fagan, 72B Kinsley Street, so the unit above Alex is in the building. So, we have been, for almost as long as I've lived there, we've got one of the, my driveway is one of the ones that would be helped by this, because the driveway in question is the one used by 74A, so the downstairs on the other side of the building. And we've had to play driveway Tetris with the residents of that unit for almost as long as we've lived there, because they end up having to go over the curb, nearly pop into our cars sometimes. There's, my, one of my roommates is currently parked in their driveway, because she has a truck, and one of them is parked in my driveway right now, and she actually almost pulled her muffler off at one point over the winter, my roommate, trying to get over that curb very, very carefully. It's been horrible, absolutely horrible. Trying to play Tetris, and neighbors annoyed because, "Oh, you're in my way, you're in my way, you're in my driveway." It's, it's been a pain. It would be really nice for everyone to be able to park in their own driveway and not risk taking a muffler off.
Understood. Any questions from the board? Anything you'd like to add?
Just that we would really appreciate everyone being able to access their driveways properly.
Understood. Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? If not, we're going to close the public hearing and open up the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Neely.
So I originally had some questions about how many cars we were trying to get in here. I didn't realize there were all three-bedroom apartments, which is quite rare in this area. So I get it, why there's so many vehicles. Realistically, what they're asking for, once you look at the pictures and do a drive-by, they're, they're never going to get the full amount of cars I think they're looking for, but, you know, to have each unit be able to get two cars, I think is what they're shooting for. I think that's fair, that keeps some cars off the street. Sounds like we got a lot of cars pulling in, and, and as, as one of the applicants said, doing a bunch of Tetris out there, so if we can avoid that on Wilder. So I think, realistically, to approve this is a safety, alleviate some safety concerns. I had asked about the, removing the driveway on Kinsley, because I'm not a big fan of backing the Kinsley, but based on the, on the number of units here, that's, that's not realistic. So I'm in favor for primarily safety reasons.
Other thoughts, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I had very similar thoughts as Mr. Neely, especially, and it was, you know, I think even this board generally has not been real keen on wider driveways overall, and is, you know, really tries to be pretty kind of, you know, sensitive to that, but safety was especially what came to mind. And then, you know, on top of that now, understanding, you know, that there's also just a lot of cars in, with these larger units, it makes sense as well. But, yeah, I think it's, at this point, the reality is, I'd rather see them also have a, just a, a more appropriate driveway to be using than stone and gravel and the curb, and just having, you know, something that's generally probably not as safe overall as well in that regard. So, yeah, so I am in support.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Boucher.
I, I recognize that in different parts of the city, especially where it's a little bit more compact. We see a lot of parking on little front lawns, going over curbs and stuff. So, when I was looking at this property, I drove around the neighborhood, and I found something very interesting. I found several properties on Blossom Street, on Wilder Street, Kingsley Street, that have much larger driveways on smaller lots, like, like this customer. So this, like this, like this applicant. So, this is not something that would be uncommon for the area. So again, I think it's reasonable for safety reasons, and again, there's evidence, I was just looking at the topographical maps, and there's evidence that, you know, they've been using this for parking for at least 10 years plus. So, so that doesn't mean it's okay, it just means that there's probably been a need for, for a long time. So I, I am in support of the application.
Yeah, I'm also in support of the application for the same reasons, and I made the same observation driving around the neighborhood, I saw other similar situations. Anybody else have any thoughts or comments? If not, does anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Neely.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Alexander Malivorn, owner 72-74 Kinsley Street, sheet 96, lot 66, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, subsection E, subsection 1, to exceed maximum driveway width, 31 feet 3 inches existing, with a 10-foot wide curb cut on Kinsley Street and a 21-foot 3-inch curb cut on Wilder Street, requesting an additional nine-foot addition to existing driveway on Wilder Street for a total width of 40 feet 3 inches. This is located in the RB zone in Ward 6. Granting the variance would not be contrary to, excuse me, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because as the board had discussed, we believe the safety issues with the cars continuously pulling back and forth into Wilder Street, as the neighbors try to jockey around each other. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed, because the, the number of units and the size of the units with the multi-bedrooms necessitates the fact that there needs to be more parking, and right now there's not enough legal parking. It was noted that this area's been used for about 10, at least 10 years, not legally, and this would clean up that area significantly. Granting the variance would do substantial justice, because the, the tenants in this building are unhappy with their safety concerns there, and the fact that they have to pull around each other consistently to live in their residence. For the following, the value of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. We do not have any testimony from anybody about diminished property value. However, we do believe that the, the owner of this property would be able to market this property better if all the, the tenants were able to use off-street parking. As to unnecessary hardship, this building is one of the few in this area that has larger three-bedroom units. Based on the, this area, we do believe that many families or units living together have multiple cars. Therefore, we do feel that this, this owner would have unnecessary hardship in the fact that he's asking his tenants to park on the street, or to move cars around each other at different hours of the day. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Boucher. All in favor? So your variance is passed unanimously. As you probably heard before, there is a 30-day window of appeal, so just be mindful of that moving forward. Thank you. You're free to go, or again, you can stay and watch. I'm going to read the next case into the record. It's application of Pedro Dejeda, Allen Davis Builders LLC, 157 to 161 Chestnut Street, requesting the following variances from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3. One, to encroach five feet into the 20-foot required rear yard setback, and two, to encroach up to one foot 9 inches into the 7-foot required left-side yard setback. Both requests to construct an attached 21-by-23 two-story home addition to the rears of the structure. It's in the RC zone in Ward 4. Is the applicant present? If you wouldn't mind coming forward to the mic, state your name and address, and present your case.
Steve Allen, Steve Allen, Stephen, Edison Allen Consultants LLC, and Allen Davis Builders. Allen Davis Builders is my building company. The other one I do this way, I, you know, meet with the boards, meet with everyone, sort out the issues.
Okay. Would you mind just pulling the mic up a little bit closer, or maybe speaking just a little louder? There you go.
Sorry.
Okay, so feel free to just explain to the board what it is you're looking to do.
Well, there's an existing home that they want to add more living space onto, and there's a section of porch in the back that is kind of old, but that would be turned into a exit in case there's an issue with the fire or anything else. The first floor will have a kitchen-living room, second floor is bedrooms or the bathroom. I believe there's a bathroom in the middle floor too. There'll be access to the house in the basement, don't cut out the wall where a window is, putting in a bulkhead.
Anything else you'd like to add?
It, it's a expansion for the family to live in. It, it's a expansion for the family to live in.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Boucher.
I don't know if you know or don't know, um, does, is it, is it, is this, um, property sh, uh, using the driveway from the neighboring property?
It's, the, um, lot line goes right down the middle. Both share egress onto the property with that.
Okay. And then, and then this unit, at one time, I believe, from, from what I remember, did it have parking behind the house?
It's always been in the same spot right in back and on the right side is a grass area that's never been touched.
Right.
There's two sheds that'll be removed to give more access in the back.
Okay. And that's where the addition would go, is where that, kind of where that grassy area was?
Yes.
But the parking will remain where it's always been?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the line that's the issue for, uh, where the setback is from seven, it goes through the existing house.
Right.
And it's just a matter of continuing that line out to the back.
Okay.
And it fades, it goes from a foot to 6 inches. It's not like a straight line, so.
Right, I understand. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
So if I may, I, I find myself confused.
Yes.
With the application. Is this not a three-unit building?
The existing home?
Yes.
The issue that I was asked, there'll only be one, um, kitchen, which is in the addition. And the, there is, uh, I believe it's two units. There's three, it's called a three-family.
So it's an existing three-family?
Yes.
So is this a fourth unit?
No, it's an, an addition onto the living space that they need to require for, um, their family to be in.
So, so there would be one three-story unit and two one-story units?
It's going to be adjacent to, it, it would be equivalent to, the existing floor that they have now would be tied into the addition, which would be the living room, the kitchen area. And then ups, up above that would be a set of stairs that goes up to bedrooms and a bathroom. And then the basement would just be a full basement.
And there was some reference in the written submission to an in-law unit?
Well, they want, you mean a EDU? No, it was categorized that I'm just doing one kitchen. I'm not leaving all the kitchens. It just, that's what makes it a EDU by putting the other areas that has a kitchen, they can't have one in the addition. So if you put one in the addition, you eliminate the other one.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Anything else you'd like to add?
Um, nothing really.
Okay. So feel free to have a seat.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody who has any questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? If not, then we're going to close the public hearing and open up the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Neely.
Yeah, so, so I'm in favor of this application. Uh, they're just extending the wall. I know we were trying to figure out how that unit's going to work, but I, but I don't really think that, that's the root of the issue here. This, this house is already in the side setback. Um, the, the, the sighting of, of the lot is not a perfect square, so, so nothing is squared up there. As, as he noticed, uh, as, as the applicant noted, you know, you got one spot where it's a, you know, one foot from the, from the line and it ends up 6 inches from the line, something along those lines. Um, also, when you, when you look at the, uh, at, at the neighborhood there, so you got, uh, 165 Chestnut and then 26 Level, so 26 is about afar, as far away from this, this house as you can get. Uh, 25 Brook is, is in the middle of their, their, um, lot as well, situated away from this house. So putting this addition on there is not, not like they're going to be looking into somebody's window next door. Um, so, yeah, so I'm in favor of this for, for the reasons of this, you know, it's a smaller lot. I get what they're trying to do and there's, there's really not much else they can do with, what the applicant is trying to do with the extra space.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I, I, I do agree. Putting any, you know, addition of any size onto this building really would be possible without going into the setbacks. And I, I also know just in driving by that, you know, I, I wasn't going to tramp through other people's yards, so you really couldn't see this from any, you, the butters could, but we have not heard from them.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for owners, uh, Pedro Ta, Taheeda. Sorry, is that correct? Ta, Taheeda?
Taheeda.
Yeah, all right. And Allen Davis Builders LLC, applicant 157 to 161 Chestnut Street, Sheet 100, Lot 84, requesting the following variances from land use code section 190, uh, dash 16, table 16-3. One, to encroach 5 feet into the 20-foot required rear yard setback. And two, to encroach up to 1 foot 9 inches into the 7-foot required left side yard setback. Both requests to construct an attached 21 by 23-foot two-story home addition to the rear of the structure. It's in the RC zone, Ward 4. We find that the, granting the variance would be, would not be contrary to public interest because, uh, again, um, as discussed, um, the homes in this neighborhood are, uh, already in setbacks, pre-existing, um, homes in setbacks. And, um, the addition is really just an extension of the home and, uh, not, um, encroaching more of, of the, of the sight line of the side of the house would be encroaching anymore with the extension of the building. Uh, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because, again, uh, the applicant is requesting some extra living space, um, and they would be able to use this living space for, um, for more of their enjoyment of the property. Uh, granting the variance would do substantial justice because, again, um, because of the, the house sit, the house, where the house is situated, um, the closeness of the property line and the ability to use, use, um, the additional space a, as needed. The surrounding, housing surrounding properties, we have no testimony for or against, um, uh, values being more or less in, in the area, so there is no real, um, statement to be made on that. Um, as, as part of the unnecessary hardship, um, again, the, we, we find that owing to the special conditions of the property that this, that, uh, distinguish it from other properties in the area, um, again, there are other properties in the area that, uh, are not, um, are pretty much close to the property line, but there are some that, that are. And we find that it is a reasonable use of the, uh, proposal is a reasonable use, again, uh, because, um, the pre-existing condition of the, the homes in the area, the closeness of property line, uh, and, um, I think that's it. Uh, so with that, I make a motion to approve the, uh, variance.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Lionel. All in favor?
I should ask if there's a discussion.
All in favor? And, uh, your variance request is passed unanimously. Uh, so again, once you, I'm sure you heard me say before, there is a 30-day window of appeal, so just keep that in mind. I'm going to read the case of Bonita Schuman Revocable Living Trust. Bryant LaFave is the applicant, uh, 3 Verona Street, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach 5 feet 6 inches into the 10-foot required front yard setback to replace an existing one-story 7 by 22-foot front porch and construct a new 7 by 22-foot two-story addition in the same footprint. This is in the RV zone in Ward 6. Is the applicant present this evening? Would you mind coming up to the mic and just state your, a name and address for the record?
I am Brian LaFave. My address is 10 Milbrook Drive, Nashville, New Hampshire. Um, looking to tear down existing 7 by 22 structure that's, I don't know, was probably put on the house sometime in the 40s and 50s, I would imagine. There's no permits for it or anything. Um, existing structure is dilapidated, it's on rotted, I don't know, lally-calling piers. It's fallen down, it's not safe. Uh, homeowner put some staircase on it that's not the code, it's a death trap. Um, I'm just looking to rip it all down, put a two-story one. I went there and I was talking with the homeowner, she wants to put an office in. Like right now, the existing room is, I don't know, there's a bunch of kids' toys and stuff, it's like a playroom, but she wants to turn her existing office into a bedroom. Right now, the kids are sharing like an 8 by 8 bedroom upstairs, there's not a lot of room. And there's an attic up above that we were originally going to try to put her office into, but there is no, like the footprint of the house isn't, is not very large, so there's no room for a staircase to get up there. And she's like, oh, can we put a pull-down staircase? It's like you can't have a pull-down staircase for a finished area. And, uh, just the way this existing staircase going to the first floor, like nothing would match up. So I propose to have it be above this room and we could just tear that down and just fix it all at once, but the existing structure is going over the setback and if I just did a one-story, it wouldn't be an issue, but because I'm doing a second story, the second story is also going over the setback, so, I don't know. I don't think it's going to affect anyone. It's going to have new siding, new windows, it's not going any further out into the street and, uh, yeah. Hardships for the homeowners, like there's no room to put any, anything else, can't go to the side, you can't, could go in the back, but they got decks and an in-law apartment and stuff, so, yeah. That's what I got.
Anything you'd like to add?
Uh, I don't, I don't believe so.
Uh, any questions from the board? If not, uh, you can take a seat. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Uh, is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? If not, we're going to close the hearing and, uh, open the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Lionel.
Yeah, when I, when I drove by this, I, I looked at that porch and I, I agree with the applicant, it's in pretty bad shape. Um, and what's being proposed, you know, it would be, I suppose, slightly more imposing on the street, but, uh, not to any extent that I think is, is a problem, and so I'm in favor of the application.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, and, and this is very common to have these homes really pretty, pretty much right at the, the curb or sidewalk or, you know, just, and I think the ones on either side are pretty much already similar, right up the same amount of encroachment. Um, and that there's been at least this existing first-story porch. Yes, as, as Mr. Lionel noted, I think there will be some level of maybe making the structure a little bit more imposing, but, yeah, I also agree, I don't think it's going to be a, a significant factor. And, uh, you know, I think was, was noted by the applicant and just, you know, there is really nowhere else to go readily to do an addition, so this seems like a reasonable, um, request.
Any other thoughts? Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Shaw?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Bonita L. Schuman Revocable Living Trust owner and Brian LaFave applicant, uh, 3 Verona Street, Sheet 101, Lot 137. The request is for variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach 5 feet 6 inches into the 10-foot required front yard setback to replace an existing one-story 7-foot by 22-foot front porch and construct a new 20, 7-foot by 22-foot two-story addition in the same footprint. This is in the RV zone, Ward 6. Um, the granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because it would allow, uh, a reasonable use of the, um, exactly, basically the existing footprint of the structure already, as noted in the, uh, application, that it's moving from a, uh, a porch to, um, a, uh, two-story addition. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed because it's, uh, a reasonable use, uh, the property is, uh, is already constrained, um, in, from the sides and, um, is no, uh, reasonable option to go, uh, addition to the back. Uh, so that would be, um, meeting the spirit of the ordinance. Uh, substantial justice, uh, would be served by granting the variance, again, for the similar reasons that, um, of, of an addition and, uh, the limitations on where that could go. Uh, there is no evidence that the, um, s, uh, any surrounding property values would be diminished by, uh, this, uh, addition. Uh, the unnecessary hardship, uh, is, um, owing to the special condition of the property, um, that, um, the, not, denying the variance would actually result in unnecessary hardship, um, since there is no, uh, fair and substantial relationship between, uh, the general purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of that provision of the property because, again, in this case, uh, there's already an existing usage in that setback. Uh, the other, uh, homes in the area are also set very far up to the street, uh, in order to be consistent with that. And it's a reasonable use as far as, um, it's not a extremely large addition, it's actually relatively small as far as depth. And, um, it would not significantly, uh, change the appearance overall of this home in relation to other homes in the area. For those reasons, I move to approve this, uh, variance request.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Shaw.
He, he, he moved it. I seconded it.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I confused myself. Seconded by Mr. Lionel.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Once again, your, um, variance request passes unanimously and I think it was, you've heard me say it previously, just be aware that there is a 30-day window of appeal. All right, I'm going to read the next case and you, again, you can stay or you're free to go, whichever you prefer. So the next case is the request of the LaCass family revocable trust of 2024, at 65 to 65 and a half Arlington Street, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-31A1 to exceed maximum height of accessory structure within 10 feet of the property line, 12 feet in height permitted, 16 feet 6 inches proposed, to construct a detached 24 by 48 garage that's in the RV zone, Ward 7. I thought that was the applicant approaching, I'm sorry. Please feel free to approach.
Jeff LaCass, 65 Arlington Street. I am looking to build a 24 by 48 garage in place of a 20 by 20 garage that is there now. Uh, the 20 by 20 garage is old and it's kind of falling down as of right now. Uh, but I've been taking stuff out of it because it's, it's that old. Um, right now, excuse me, right now, the garage already encroaches on the setback, so even if I were to take that garage down and build the same one in the same spot, I would still need a variance. So I figure, why not try to build one that's actually useful? 24 by 48 would help me, 24 is, to me, is, is skinny, that's why I'm trying to get the 48. And the height, I also have, like the first, uh, people that were here, I have cars that I like to put in there, possibly a lift to get, that's why the height. Um, I also have a, uh, one of my vehicles is tall. Um, in the past, I've had stuff stolen off of it, uh, when I wasn't around, so if I can hide that vehicle when I'm not around, um, that would be great. So that's why the height, because that tall vehicle.
Hi, Dick Bossen, Old Dick's Carpentry, 66, Chaffin Circle, Hudson, New Hampshire. Um, hopefully going to build a garage for the LaCass family. Um, as far as the height is concerned, I'm doing a little bit taller garage door and also we're doing a low pitch, doing a five pitch. I'm trying to keep it as low as poss, possible with the profile in the neighborhood. Um, but even if I shrunk the garage, height of the garage door, we'd still be over the maximum 12-foot height. Um, most of the buildings in that neighborhood. Um, most of the buildings in that neighborhood are two stories, this garage will still be substantially lower than any of the other roof lines in the neighborhood. So, um, I did as much as I could to try to keep the height as low as possible.
Anything other you would like to add?
Um, no, I mean, like I said, the biggest thing for me is, you know, not getting, when I'm not around, to be able to put my vehicle in there so I don't have my Cadillac converter stolen off of it again, um, which was painful, um, so that's the biggest thing for the height, um, is, is getting that vehicle in there, and also getting my personal vehicle that I have stored somewhere else right now back at my own property.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Lionel.
Okay, I have not seen what the actual height is going to be.
The total height from the ground to the ridge is gonna end up being about nineteen feet.
And, and Mr. Fox, please remind me how the city measures that for the purpose of the ordinance?
Okay. They measure, I'll speak if you want me to.
Go ahead.
Um, but usually, they measure from the top of the wall to the height of the ridge, that midway point is what the sixteen feet is coming into play.
So, it's, all right, so it's sixteen feet at the midpoint?
Of the midpoint of the, uh, of the pitch, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lionel, that's correct, we measure the building height, the midpoint between the eve and the ridge, but for accessory structures, there's normally a six-foot side yard setback and a six-foot rear yard setback for those, however, if there, if there's one provision that the maximum height of accessory structure within ten feet of property line, that height maximum is twelve feet, so that's why they're gonna be a little bit higher than that, that.
Okay. Yeah, all right, thank you.
That's what his variance is actually for.
Any other questions from the board? Anything you'd like to add? If not, please feel free to take a seat. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the application?
Good evening, Lou Jarris at fifty-six Haines Street, and I'm the, uh, next-door neighbor where the, uh, the, the existing garage is, is, is abutting that, that property, my property at fifty-six Haines Street, and, uh, I, I think it's, it's fair and reasonable for the applicant to, uh, to build a new updated garage, a, and a longer one in that, uh, within that setback, it's not gonna be any further into the setback. Uh, this may also help with the parking, that's, uh, there's also a, a dwelling upstairs that, uh, an apartment that the, you know, those residents will be able to park, I think, a little bit better than they have existing right now, and, uh, knowing the applicant for many years, I think the, uh, construction and the demolition and the, and the construction will go pretty well. I know that, uh, the contractor has done work there in the past, and things seem to go pretty smoothly, and I don't think there'll be very much disruption to, um, to, you know, my area, my property, and, and the existing neighbors as well. Uh, and as mentioned, there, you know, there are, this is, there's a reasonable amount of density in the, in that area where there's houses that are fairly close together, in addition, there are also extra, uh, there are, you know, outbuildings like garages and sheds as well, so it's, um, it's not gonna change, in my view, it's not gonna change the character of the, uh, of that corner or that street, uh, that much, if you will. Um, I, I don't, I don't believe that there's gonna be any, any injustice or any other, uh, issues, again, with, with, with the proposal itself, uh, in regards to, uh, the, uh, the surrounding structures and property owners. Uh, if there's any questions, I'll gladly entertain any.
Mr. Boucher.
Did you say you were directly behind, uh, the applicant?
No, I'm, I'm abutting to the, uh, if you're looking south, to the, to the west side.
If you're looking at the diagram, it's his house.
If you're looking from the street to the, to the front of the properties.
Okay.
From Haines, if you're looking at Haines Street, on the, uh, so it's, it, the application's from the Arlington Street side, I'm looking from the Haines Street side.
You said, you said, your address was what?
Fifty-six Haines.
Okay, so this is fifty-four, this is why I'm a little confused.
Yeah, that's it, I think.
Okay, so, so you're, so when I said directly behind, uh, 'cause I'm assuming the front door's on, uh, Arlington Street, so, we got, the, the, the math was just mistaken, it was said fifty-four, so I was just trying to figure out where you were exactly, so, I'm good, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I do have one question for the applicant, however, is that okay?
Yes. If you have a question, would my returning, um, to the podium?
Yeah. Looking at, at this diagram that you've drawn, um, it looks to me as if the driveway, um, obviously, is, is twenty-four feet leading up, right up, up the garage, but at the street, it looks like it's closer to forty feet?
It's curb-to-curb, that's what it was when I, as far as I know, I never cut and removed any curbs, that's the way it was when I bought the building eleven years ago.
Okay. I'm just, I'm making that comment because that exceeds what the city, uh, normally allows for a driveway width, and I was wondering whether a variance for that had ever been granted, but it's not germane to your particular application, so it was more of a matter of curdled city.
Yeah, I, it wasn't for me, it, that's how the curbs are now, the driveway width is now, is, was that way when I bought it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to the applicant? Thank you. Uh, is there anybody, uh, who'd like to speak with any questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? If not, then we'll close the public hearing and open the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Neely.
So, I'm in favor of the application. Uh, this applicant is looking to build basically in the same footprint, just a little bit bigger from what's already there. Uh, the applicant said that his current garage has fallen apart. Um, it was interesting to hear the applicant can't even keep his own car at his, his property right now, um, so it is more than fair to have a garage that's large enough to, uh, have his work vehicle, uh, and his personal vehicle. Uh, many, many people have two-car garages in, in that neighborhood. Um, also, it, it's interesting that they are taking into account the fact that the work truck is a little bit taller, and I get that, so they're building that oversized, uh, door. Um, you know, we've had testimony of the abutter, that he is, believes, uh, everything is set up well, so he's very much in favor of this, uh, of this, uh, being just a little bit taller. I think the applicant and his contractor have done everything and they do, can, to keep it as low as possible, however, uh, based on the oversized front door to fit the work truck, that's really what's driving, uh, the higher height, uh, so for those reasons, I'm in favor of this application.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Shaw?
Pretty much just echoing Mr. Neely's comments, but I, I do think especially just, you know, real significant, since it is specifically the, the variance that we're dealing with, I think there was very much that, um, all things were kind of examined to try to keep that height from being any more than it needed to, I mean, you know, I could've, you know, asked for something with much higher pitch, maybe, you know, more storage up there, those kind of things, but I think there was, you know, that sensitivity to try to minimize the, the, you know, the, the relief being requested, uh, and, um, I appreciate that, and I think there's not much else that could be done to have a structure put in this place with all these other factors that were discussed, uh, and I think, as also noted, um, I forget who said it, but the, the point being that the structure will, will actually have lower overall height than almost every other structure in the vicinity, uh, probably shy of sheds, you know, so, uh, but, so I, I am in support.
Any other thoughts? If anybody else, I can go ahead and take this one, if it's okay with everyone. Uh, so, I, I'd like to make a motion that the, um, application of the LaCass family revocable trust of 2024, at sixty-five to sixty-five and a half Arlington Street, for a variance from land use code section 190-31A1, to exceed the maximum height of accessory structure within ten feet of the property line, twelve feet in height permitted, sixteen feet, six inches proposed, to construct a detached twenty-four by forty-eight garage be approved. Uh, we find that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because, as testimony we've heard, there was an effort made to really keep the size of the massing of the structure and the roof line consistent with the character of the area, so it would be consistent with that character, uh, and there is no evidence that it would be injurious to, uh, the public, uh, in any way, and that the spirit of the ordinance, uh, would be met for the same reasons, uh, and that granting the variance would do substantial ju- justice because, again, as we've heard, the, uh, property owner has a need for greater height to accommodate existing vehicle as well as to accommodate his additional personal vehicle, uh, and once more, an effort was made to, to keep it as low as, uh, possible, uh, so given that, denying the variance, um, would, uh, be an injustice to the, uh, property owner 'cause it really is no gain to the public by denying the variance. Um, we find that there would be no diminution to surrounding property values, in fact, we did have testimony from, uh, the most affected abutter in favor of the application, uh, and that we find that owing to special conditions of the property, uh, those being really the fact that there is, you know, where the existing, uh, structures on the property are positioned, including the existing garage, there really is no way, um, to rebuild it without being in the setback or, uh, being within, uh, the ten feet and, um, providing the size and the utility that the owner needs, and, uh, therefore, there's no fair and substantial relationship between the general purposes of the ordinance and its specific application, uh, to this property, and we find that the proposed use, the garage, is a reasonable one. Uh, so for those reasons, I, uh, make a motion to grant the variance. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? All those in favor? And, you're, if you can find you in the audience, uh, so, once again, your, uh, variance is passed unanimously, and as we've said to everybody else this evening, just be mindful that there is a thirty-day window of appeal. Good luck.
I'm gonna read the next case, uh, this is the application of Parkinson Irrevocable Trust, COE Henry Parkinson III, trustee, thirty Coburn Avenue, requesting the following variances from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3. One, for lot width on existing, on existing lot, two hundred and four feet existing, ninety-nine point eight feet proposed, one hundred and twenty feet required, uh, I'm sorry, uh, one hundred and twenty feet required. Two, for left-side yard setback, seventeen point one feet proposed, twenty feet required, and three, for lot width on proposed lot one, ninety-nine point nine feet proposed, one hundred and twenty feet required. All requests to subdivide one lot into two lots. It's in the R-18 zone, Ward one.
Uh, if you would mind stating your name and address for the record.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm Joe Wickard, I'm the surveyor that prepared the plan in front of you this evening, I'm out of Manchester, um, so, we're here tonight on behalf of the Parkinson Irrevocable Trust. Uh, Hank Parkinson is in the audience this evening, so if the board, excuse me, if the board has any questions, uh, that I can't answer, I'm sure Hank can. So, uh, the reason we're here this evening is the trust, which was his parents' own lot 107 on Tax Map F. Uh, his dad has passed, his mom is still doing well, she's in the house, but it's sort of an estate planning issue. And, so currently, as configured, the lot has two hundred point four feet of frontage, roughly, you know, a hundred and ninety foot, or close to two hundred foot of depth, one ninety-two, I think, to one ninety-nine, uh, and it has about thirty-nine thousand one hundred square feet. Subject lot is in the R-18 zone, which requires one hundred foot of frontage, eighteen thousand square foot of area, but it has a requirement for a hundred and twenty foot of lot width. So, unfortunately, we do not comply with the lot width requirement, which is the reason we're here before you this evening. Um, what Mr. Parkinson would like to do is to subdivide the lot more or less in half. The lot with the house would have a hundred point four feet of frontage, the new lot would have one hundred feet of frontage, uh, both lots would be above the eighteen thousand square foot minimum, uh, but neither lot would have the hundred and twenty foot of lot width, and the existing house, the southwest corner, is only seventeen point one feet off of that sideline where the ordinance requires twenty. So, um, you know, we believe that this is a reasonable request, that the property, subject property is one of the larger lots in the area, uh, there, even after it's subdivided, it's still gonna be consistent with, uh, much of the neighborhood, and, um, if you go, I think it's three lots south of this, it turns into R-9 where the frontage requirement reduces to ninety, and the hundred and twenty foot lot width is not in play. Uh, directly to the south of us was, uh, which is one, I think, the last lot in the R-18, that was subdivided, almost identical to this application back in 2020 through a variance and then planning board approval, um, so we believe that this application i- is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and is sort of the highest and best use of the property. Um, we had, in the exhibit, we mentioned the, that we don't believe there's any, uh, reduction in value to surrounding neighborhoods, so I did, uh, when I was prepping for this, I went through some of the items, I probably should've added it into the application, I didn't, so I apologize, but the new lot, lot sixteen seventy-nine, which is to the south, most of the houses in this neighborhood tend to run in between five and six hundred thousand on assessed value, the new house is, I think it's eight seventy. So, I think, you know, it's just a function of new construction, they have different amenities, different sizes, so, you know, our belief is that, um, the new house will probably exceed the value of the surrounding neighborhood, so we're hopeful that the board would agree that it, um, there'd be no reduction in value, and, um, I think I've covered most of the, um, well, the, I guess the only housekeeping item is, um, current house is, is serviced by an onsite well, and as part of this application, we would be proposing a connection onto, I mean, uh, Penn and Chuck water, which is available in the street, so we are aware of that, and we are, uh, the applicant is agreeable to it, so, I'd be happy to any question, answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, um, anything you'd like to add?
Nope.
Okay, feel free to take a seat. Uh, anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anybody like to speak with any questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open up the deliberation for the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Shaw?
I mean, I think this is, you know, it's, it's very close to being able to just meet all the requirements, and, and for, you know, the, the kind of just unfortunate kind of placement of the existing house and that little bit of encroachment, you know, it's super minimal, um, and then the, the, the width, um, uh, relief is likewise, um, just so, so small overall that, uh, this is, just seems to be almost like where the math just didn't quite work, but the intent, you know, when you, when we start talking about spirit and intent of the ordinance, all those kind of things, I mean, putting, you know, dividing this, uh, property and, and having two, you know, separate homes on it is consistent with, I think, the way this kind of generally in this neighborhood is mapped out, um, so this is not, does not, to me, have one of those feels like somebody's really trying to do everything possible to squeeze a lot, you know, squeeze, you know, another dwelling in and, and asking for lots of relief, this is like, it's just, again, the numbers just aren't quite there, uh, unfortunately, so.
Any other thoughts?
Just, it just seems to me it would be a giant waste if we didn't approve this. Um, this, I, I agree with Mr. Shaw, it's a pretty reasonable request.
I agree, I support it also, and, and actually, just in, in looking at the lot and the way the house is situated, it looks like it was intended, you know, to be two at some point, and I don't think it'd be perceivable to anyone, you know, in the neighborhood that this was, as, as you put it, a house that was wedged in, so. Anything I'd like to, a motion? Mr. Neely?
I would like to make a motion to approve the variance for the Parkinson Irrevocable Trust, COE Harry Parkinson III, trustee, owner, thirty Coburn Avenue, sheet F, lot 107, requesting the following variances from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3. Number one, for lot width on existing lot, two hundred point four feet existing, ninety-nine point eight feet proposed, one hundred and twenty feet required. Number two, for left side, uh, left side yard setback, seventeen point one feet proposed, twenty feet required, and number three, for lot width on proposed lot number one, in quotation marks, ninety-nine point nine feet proposed, one hundred and twenty feet required. All requests to subdivide one lot into two lots, this is located in the R-18 zone in Ward one. Uh, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, as we've discussed, uh, here, many of the lots in this area, or several of the lots in this area have already been divided, uh, this is- This is an oversized lot in the R eighteen. And it appears that the house that's currently on the lot is located and put in a direction to easily allow this lot to be subdivided. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed because as discussed here, most of these requests are very small footage-wise. And as noted by one of the members here, it'd be a giant waste not to approve it. So that being said, we do feel that the spirit of the ordinance is to allow these larger lots to be subdivided when necessary, as they requested. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because to not approve the variance would leave these folks with an oversized lot in a neighborhood where other lots have already been subdivided. It appears this is one of the largest lots that's still left in this area. We do not have specific information regarding the value of surrounding properties, but it was noted that one of the close houses was several hundred thousand dollars in value, higher than the current property value on this lot one. Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, as noted earlier, this is an oversized lot. It looks like it was designed to be subdivided when originally put together, and the placement of the original house on there to not allow this would not allow this applicant to do something that it's, it appears it was designed to do. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve.
We have a second. Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Any general variance requests, pass unanimously.
And our last case for this evening, thank you for waiting so patiently. So this is the complication of Roland and Greta Duplessis, I think, and Eric Parent applicant, for one seventeen Ridge Road, requesting the following. One, a special exception from land use code section one ninety dash fifteen, table fifteen dash one, number three, to allow an accessory dwelling unit in the basement of an existing home. And two, a variance from land use code section one ninety dash thirty-two B one, to exceed the maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit, seven hundred and fifty square feet permitted, one thousand and fifty square feet proposed. This is in the R forty zone in Ward five. The applicant's here to come up to the mic, as you've heard before. Would you mind just stating your name and address for the record?
My name is Eric Parent. I live at one twenty Ridge Road in Nashua. I am the contractor doing the work on the property also. Basically, had a fire there, basically ruined the whole downstairs. The basement was finished. So we pretty much want to put it back to where it was existing. The house was built in the seventies. From what I can see from the structure, it looks like it was all built at the same time. So whether I had a permit or not for that unit down the basement, or that in-law unit down the basement, I don't know. But as a contractor, I can tell how old the lumber is, I can tell how old the electrical is and all that stuff. So I can see that it was built pretty much at the same timeframe. I'm looking to replace what was existing. There is a, it's a three-acre lot, a little over three-acre lot. Got a, you got a pool, an ground pool out back, so having access, that slider door that was there, to come into the house to a bathroom or something like that on that basement line would be optimal. It would increase the value of the home because you're having all that extra space in the home for a larger family. I don't see any impact in the area or neighborhood. Like I said, I live right across the street. I've lived there for fifteen years. I've known the homeowner there. He's lived there for, he was born there. So, I don't know, it's pretty simple.
And I do note that the owner did sign the accessory dwelling unit affidavit. And is aware of the requirements.
Correct, yeah.
Any questions for the board? Anything that you'd like to add?
No, just like getting back in his home. He's been living in a hotel for the last six months.
All right, well, feel free to take a seat. And I'm just going to go on a limb and say there is nobody here to speak either in favor or in opposition. So with that, we'll close the public hearing and open the deliberations to the board. Thoughts from the board?
Mr. Shaw, go first.
I mean, I think basically the knowledge that this has been in existence for a very long time, they're not looking to do anything different. And whether it was or wasn't, you know, legally in place as far as the ADU, and depending on even how old that was and the time of the different changing zoning laws, et cetera. But I think the reality is, again, that now it will be up to code if we do approve this. And again, it's just basically replacing what already was in existence. And so I think, I don't see any hard to, and, you know, we didn't really explore it much, but, you know, I took it from testimony that this overage that, you know, is the, you know, the thousand feet or so versus the seven fifty that's allowed directly is because of, again, the existing space, the way it already was set up and being used. So we're not talking about any additions or anything else other than, again, just essentially redoing what was already in place. So I am in support.
Any other thoughts, Mr. Lionel?
Actually, Mr. Shaw said everything I was going to say, so I'm in support.
Right, yeah, I am in support also. And although I didn't do all the math, I wonder if you took, I don't take it into consideration mechanical orbit in the stairwell, if we're really as over as it may seem. But I think we've seen cases like this in the past where we had somebody looking to convert a basement, and it's just challenging, what do you do with that extra space? Right, so I think we should take, you know, take this in two parts. We've got the variance request and the special exception. So maybe starting with the variance request first, but does anybody want to make a motion?
Lionel?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owners, Roland and Greta Duplessis. Eric Parent is the applicant, one seventeen Ridge Road, sheet C, lot four, requesting, let's see, we're reading the variance first. Variance from land use code section one ninety thirty-two B one to exceed maximum size of accessory dwelling unit, seven hundred and fifty square feet permitted, one thousand and fifty square feet proposed. This is in the R forty zone, Ward one. Excuse me, Ward, yeah, Ward one, no, Ward five, excuse me. Looking at the wrong place, okay. The board finds that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because this ADU essentially has existed for perhaps up fifty years or more and looks like it was built that way initially. Therefore, it doesn't harm the public interest. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed because it allows for this existing ADU. And we believe also that the, you know, it's possible the overage is really not all that important based on excluded areas. Granting the variance would do a substantial justice to the homeowner because this area has existed for many, many, many years, and they would just like to resume its use. Values of surrounding parcels would not be diminished because nobody would know it's there. There's no additional use being proposed for this ADU. And denying the application would create unnecessary hardship for the applicant because there is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application to this property. Therefore, make a motion to approve this area variance.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any deliberations from the board? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Do I take a stab at the special exception?
Special exception, okay. Again, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owners Roland and Greta Duplessis. Eric Parent is the applicant, one seventeen Ridge Road, sheet C, lot four, requesting special exception from land use code section one ninety dash fifteen, table fifteen dash one, number three, to allow an accessory or in-law dwelling unit in the basement of an existing home. The board finds that this requested use is listed as a special exception. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or undue impair pedestrian safety. This ADU has existed for many, many years without creating a problem. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or other municipal system. Again, this ADU has existed with all of its usage for decades. Therefore, we don't believe that there's any evidence that it would create additional overload or any overload. Special regulations are fulfilled other than the square footage, which we've already granted a variance against. The owner has signed affidavit about that. And the board believes that the requested use will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood. It's not visible to anybody outside the building. So I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? All those in favor?
And your requests for a variance and special exception passed unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Absolutely, good luck.
Good night, guys.
Good night. That takes us to the agenda for the next meeting. Anybody see any regional impact?
I do not. I don't.
No.
Yeah, I don't either. So next is the minutes of April eighth. Mr. Patrick?
I had one edit. Yeah. Page nine, the second full paragraph, I think it's line, if I count it right, it's line ten down. The line that starts with proposed seven units, so it's about the ninth dense property. I think we want to say ninth most dense. Something is missing from after ninth and dense. Like, if I'm, if I'm remembering where that was on the list, I think, I think they were saying it was the ninth, it'd be the ninth most, ninth most dense property in that, in that area.
I'm sorry, I'm so struggling to find.
Oh, no, so. It's the, it's the paragraph that starts with attorney Westgate said that the use will observe the spirit and intent. And then line one, two, three, four, five, six.
Kind of in the middle.
Yeah, kind of in the middle there. The line that starts with proposed seven.
Yes, most dense.
I think most dense was what, if I remember correctly.
Or densest, yeah.
Whichever is, I don't think most or densest matters, but. That's why I.
So I have one on page fifteen. In the second full paragraph that starts with Mr. McCarras stated, if you go down to the one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh line, it says granting the variance is a fair and substantial relationship. I think what that should say is, I would suggest striking the words granting the variance is a and replacing that with there is no, so that it would read, there is no fair and substantial relationship between the density requirements of the ordinance and the specific application to this property, if that makes sense. Otherwise, I'm good. All right. If anyone wants to make a motion on the minutes, Mr. Neely?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of April eighth, as written with the two exceptions that we have just discussed.
Excellent, is there a second?
Mr. Shaw, second.
Mr. Shaw seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
That passes. So is there anything else we need to discuss this evening? Now motion to adjourn? Salute.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw, and we are adjourned.